Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May meeting of the Town and Kent Planning Board. Could we please all rise for the pledge? [Clerk] Let's lead this assembly by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Before the meeting starts, just want to make note that Kathy Doherty is the alternate today for Rich, and everybody else is present. Okay. I think we'll just go head off and go with Moody property.
Not any minutes?
Yeah, Moody property.
For the record, my name is John Andrews. I'm the engineer to the planning board. Moody's on the agenda this evening. They're scheduled for a public hearing. I believe all is in order. I do have a memo, and Bruce had a memo. Bruce's memo was short and sweet. He went out there, "There are no wetlands, so no wetland permit is required." They made a substantial submittal. The majority of my comments have been satisfactorily resolved. There's a couple minor technical edits and a couple minor corrections, none of which are substantive or significant, and we'll see what the public hearing reveals, and if there are no substantive comments, there's a couple actions the board can take this evening.
Okay. Who would like to make the motion to open the public hearing for the Moody property at 221 Resecute Street in Kent?
I'll move.
Two seconds?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody here for the public hearing for a property at 221 Resecute?
Joseph Rina, Principal Site Design Consultants. Here representing the Moody family, Mr. Moody, who have purchased a lot at 221 Resecute. The lot is vacant. It was created as part of a subdivision in 1978, the Habercorn subdivision, and this is the remaining lot of the three lots that were created. So it is proposed to construct a new residence on the property. The new residence is going to be served by septic imwell. We have prepared a SWIP in which we are managing the stormwater through infiltration at the rear of the residence. We are also disturbing steep slopes, approximately 4,800 square feet of steep slope between 15% and 25%. And this is mainly at the location of the house site. As part of the project, we'll be removing 78 trees, 52 of the trees are under eight inches in diameter. And to mitigate the disturbances to the steep slope and to the site, we have prepared an erosion sediment control plan with a detailed construction sequence. The proposed construction will not have any, will not have a negative impact on any of the adjoining properties. As you know, we are asking for an erosion sediment control permit for the proposed construction. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody here for the public hearing? Okay. If nobody's here for the public hearing, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on the said 221 Resecute Street property.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the public hearing is closed.
Given the fact that there was overwhelming silence during the course of the public hearing, I'm taking that to be that there was no substantive public comment. As a consequence, I think this has reached a point where it's down to just tweaking little things. So my recommendation to you is, in our review memo, the applicant provided a bond estimate. I reviewed it together with Bruce. We modified the bond estimate, and we would recommend that the town planning board accept a bond amount in, a bond in the amount of $36,000. And we ask that you accept the bond amount and recommend it for approval to the town board.
Okay. Who would like to make the motion to accept the bond amount, as said, for $36,000 for the property at 221 Resecute Street and refer it to the town board?
I'll make the motion.
Who wants a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second matter. It's reached a point where, as I said, they're minor items. We would recommend, Bruce and I, a simple oral resolution to move this to administrative track and off the planning board agenda, leaving it between the applicant and staff and consultants.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion to move the said property applicant to the administrative track.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are done. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Is that Con property, or Zaycon property?
Rick Bolander, the civil engineer on the Zaycon project here tonight with the owner, Mr. Joe Zaycon. Since we last presented in front of the board, we have prepared a stormwater pollution prevention plan to mitigate the increase in runoff caused by the increase in impervious areas. No news from the Health Department yet. We have submitted, just awaiting comment and approval, eventual approval from the Health Department. Here tonight to answer any questions from the public, as this is a public hearing, so just here tonight to answer any questions.
Okay. Who would like to make the motion to open the public hearing for the property at 592 Luddingtonville Road?
I'll make the motion.
Who would like a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there anybody here for the public hearing for property at 592 Luddingtonville Road? Okay. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing for the property at 592 Luddingtonville Road. Who would like to second it?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening again. Again, there's overwhelming public silence, but it's a little premature to move this one to administrative track yet. They did make a big submission, but there's a disconnect between certain things in the submission and some of the comments. For instance, their stormwater pollution prevention plan shows a system with nine infiltration units. The plan indicates 12 units. We went out there and did soil testing. The nine units are shown where the system couldn't go, and the 12 units are not shown where the system could go, so there's, there's a couple tweaks that need to be made, but what we would recommend is that you direct the applicant to address all the open issues, make a re-submittal, and place this on next month's agenda in anticipation of being able to accept a bond and move this to administrative track.
Okay. Anybody have any questions?
No.
No?
No. Okay. So there's nothing we can do tonight? All right.
You got my letter, ma'am? No? All right, I'll make sure. Okay, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Good night. Okay. Beresford?
Good evening. Jason Snyder with Beatty &amp; Watson for the Beresford project. We've addressed Bruce's comments regarding the proposed stormwater mitigation for phosphorus. I believe he is satisfied with, with the changes, and it looks like he has another round of comments. I mean, at this point, I don't know, I don't know what else I can ask other than for this to be moved to administrative track so that we can work things out with Bruce, so that's...
To echo that, there is a, my matters have been substantially resolved for a while. Bruce issued a comment memo. He is, his issues have substantially been resolved. There's a couple small i dots and t crosses. Our recommendation this matter, this evening, is that we did prepare a bond amount, Bruce and I, based on Jason's most current submission. The revised bond amount is $19,500. We would ask that you accept that bond amount and refer it to the town board, and once you do...
We'll do that first.
Yes.
Okay. Who would like to make the motion to accept the bond amount for $19,500 for the Kent, the property at Kent Lakes Avenue and refer it to the town board?
I'll make it.
And who seconds?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then, the public hearing on this matter has been closed. There was no substantive, was really no issue. There was one minor one, but we would recommend that you move this to an administrative track. Again, a simple oral resolution to dot the i's and cross the t's, and we should be good to move forward.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion to move this said property and applicant to administrative track.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You got your wish.
Good evening. Adam Thieberg from Inside Engineering Surveying Landscap Architecture PC, representing the applicant, Mr. Paul Camarda. Mr. Camarda wanted to be here tonight, but has recently undergone some major surgery, so was unable to make it. But we're here tonight to request two 90-day extensions of the amended site plan, steep slopes, permit, erosion control permit, and a freshwater well-in permit.
Folks, you should have in front of you a draft resolution entitled Draft Number One. Basically, they made a timely request for this extension. Their extension really doesn't, isn't really required until July. They're a little bit early. But everything is in order, and they clearly established in their request for an extension that the project has not materially changed and that it is essentially the same and that in reality, the extension is in order, so, and we've put together a resolution which states that fact, and it sets forth all the terms and conditions that lead up to this, but I think the pertinent clauses are, be it further resolved pursuant to the necessary chapters. You extend for two 90-day extensions site plan, erosion sediment control, and wetlands, and that the two 90-day extension shall be effective on July 2nd of 2025 and will expire on December 29th, 2025, and that it comes with the conditions that at the end of the first 90-day extension, they must come back to you and demonstrate that they're still in good standing and still trying to move this thing ahead. And the other thing I want to note is no further extensions are required, so if they don't get everything squared away by December 29th, we're going to have to look at a potential reapproval at that point in time. But I would ask that you adopt this resolution. I would need a motion, a second, and then a roll call vote, please.
Okay. Who would like to make the motion to accept the two 90-days extension for Patterson Crossing, which shall be from July 2nd, 2025, and will expire in December 29th, 2025?
I'll move.
Who seconds?
I'll second.
Roll call vote.
I'll do it.
Okay.
Simon Carey, Chair.
Aye.
Tom Ferroni, Vice Chair.
Aye.
Hugo German.
Aye.
Jackie Bouchard.
Aye.
Giancarlo Cattucci.
Aye.
Richard Marini is absent. Jean Monet.
Aye.
Kathy Doherty as acting planning board member.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
John, if no further extensions are allowed after that point in December, what happens at that point?
As has transpired before on this project, they need to request and submit sufficient documentation to warrant that they obtain a reapproval. So you would go back through the process, and you would actually reapprove it. You got to take a look at all the factors, and it's, it's a little bit more cumbersome, and it's a little bit more incumbent upon them to do a pretty good job putting together their package, but you could theoretically reapprove the project.
Thank you.
And with any reapproval, you can also add whatever conditions may be warranted. Now, I mean, it's almost 10 years.
And so that's already been done?
That's already been done a couple times. Not unusual. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay. Moving on to Kent Storage.
I'm here representing the owners of Kent Self Storage. Their site plan approval expired on May 9th, and they're asking for a time extension for reasons noted in their April 23rd letter. They encountered delays, unforeseen delays that are preventing them from starting the construction.
I think I'm going to have to start sitting over here.
I know.
Here again, you should have in front of you a draft resolution. The key factors are, they did make a timely request for extension, even though it expires tomorrow, May 9th. Everybody seems to think today's May 9th. I don't know why, but tomorrow. And given, and it's the same situation. Given the complexity and the time it took to get the approval, it doesn't make sense to let it lapse, so they did ask for two 90-day extensions, and they would be for site plan approval and the steep slope and erosion control permit. And so it would be for two 90-day extensions. I'm sorry, I got the wrong, I got the... So it is real, it is only for site plan and erosion and sediment control, and you grant two 90-day extensions. The 90-day extension shall be from May 9th, 2025, and will expire on November 25th, 2025. Again, with the same terms and conditions, and again, no further extensions would be permissible at that time. They'd have to consider a reapproval as well if they are not ready at that point in time. So again, it's a motion, a second, and a roll call vote.
And it also is the same as the last time, is after the first 90 days, they have to come back?
Yes, that is correct. We've introduced that administrative procedure in any extension request these days.
Okay. Who would like to make the motion to accept the two 90-days extension for Kent Self Storage on Route 311 for the site plan and the erosion control?
I'll move.
Start beginning May 9th, 2025 expires November 5th, 2025.
I'll move.
Who seconds?
Second.
We'll do the roll call.
Simon Carey.
Aye.
Thomas Ferroni.
Aye.
Hugo German.
Aye.
Jackie Bouchard.
Aye.
Giancarlo Cattucci.
Aye.
Richard Marini is absent. Jean Monet.
Aye.
Kathy Doherty as member.
Aye.
Motion carries and passes.
Okay. Next online would be Homes Presbyterian Conference Association.
My name's Kyle Brennan. I'm the executive director at Presbyterian Conference Association. I also have on the phone with me Theodore Masters with EnviroTrack. He's been helping us out with just some of the last closeouts on this. We're here to release the, request the release of the erosion control bond, stormwater management facilities, and performance bond in escrow, or to learn the next steps in moving towards that.
Here you go. You got your steps now?
Good evening. Here again, Bruce and I have discussed this. We did receive their written request. We believe the request to be appropriate. Bruce and I are both under the impression that there may have already been some release done on this, but what I'm here to request is suggest that you should be willing to entertain this, number one, and number two, authorize Bruce and I to make a field observation visit to ensure that everything is consistent with, with the representations that they have made, and that we be further authorized to review the file and research what is necessary to properly close this out. As I, Bruce and I can remember, we were out there with their engineer a while ago, and I thought everything was, I thought we were down to minimal amounts, so I've got to go back through our records as well. But we just require board authorization, and we'll be in touch with you folks.
Anybody have any questions?
So this will go to June?
No, we're just going to tell, right now, we're going to just, oh.
There are two bonds, one's for the...
Yes.
... control and the storm...
We're aware of that, but we need to check our records because it seems to us that some of those bonds may have already been released. Portions of them. We'll be in touch.
Okay. I'd like to make the motion to grant our engineer and environmental consultant permission to look into all the records involved in this said property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch, folks.
Pardon the pronunciation, but is it Laspinia property? I don't know if I said that right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I make a recommendation? Andy Chung is here on behalf of the Morachos property, and I don't think there's anyone here that's speaking on Laspinia and our property.
Thanks.
So to suggest that I cursee, will you take this, Chuck?
Nobody has any problem with moving up?
No. Yes, we can move that up, so Moracho.
Good evening. Andy Chung, AC Engineering here for the Morachos, 494 Luddingtonville Road, 10 and 1/2 acre property in a subdivision into two separate lots. Existing house remaining on the seven-acre property and a new single-family dwelling on the three-and-a-half acre lot. Septic design has been completed. Been speaking with the Board of Health and with Anthony. Will need a subdivision approval before we can submit final plans to the Board of Health. DEC permits have been filed. The jurisdictional determination has been completed. DEP permits have been filed. There were some minor edits to the long EAF that I submitted to John and Bruce. Received Bruce's memo. He had a small comment regarding the plantings in the wetland mitigation area, so I'll respond to that. Basically, all the stormwater, everything, all of the engineering has been completed on, on the site.
Hi, Andy. Good evening again. So I do have a memo dated today. Bruce does have a memo, and again, they're, they're pretty much dotted i's and crossed and t's. Mr. Chung has done most of the heavy lifting. What we would ask, Bruce and I, is that the planning board consider holding a public hearing on preliminary subdivision, wetland permit, and erosion control and steep slopes for the June meeting. That would allow us to move this forward. If you are willing to do that, it would take a simple oral resolution to set the public hearing for June, and it must specifically be for the three items.
Anybody have any comments?
No.
No. I think the meeting will be June, I think 12th, right, Vera? Okay. All right. Who'd like to make the motion to move this to the public hearing for the preliminary subdivision, wetland, and steep slope, and erosion control for June 12th, 2025?
I'll make the motion.
Sorry?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The next item is, we had talked about this last time, and when Bruce came back, he wanted to do the, change the order a little bit. So what Bruce and I are asking for is authorization to prepare the EAF parts two and three with a negative declaration for your consideration, and also a resolution of approval with conditions for the June meeting, because we're not expecting a lot of public outcry here either, but we'd like to be prepared so that we can move this ahead at the next meeting, providing there is no substantive public comment.
Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right. So we'll see you next month. You just need to work with Vera for the public hearing matters.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't know. Laspinia property?
Good evening, everybody. My name is William Basharat. I'm representing the owner. He's actually in Florida. We are enjoying better weather than they do down there. This is, we haven't had a work session with the planning board on it, so I really don't have much comment. It's an existing building lot that got a Board of Health approval, and we would like to develop it with a single-family dwelling on it, and I don't know if there's any comments from Bruce and Tom. We'll take a look at them and see what we can do with them.
This is, this is actually a first submittal, and the application was slightly unclear to us. Says site plan, but it appears as though what they may need is a steep slope and erosion control permit. It's not very clear on the plan set. Since it is just the first, you know, the first submittal, what we'd like, Bruce and I, would be authorization to conduct a field observation visit and then move to our comments. This is one of those lots where we both need to see it, because it's kind of been around for quite a while, and we need to see what the conditions are out there. And then we would have comments for the next meeting. Bruce and I are both under the impression that there may have already been some release done on this, but what I'm here to request is suggest that you should be willing to entertain this, number one. And number two, authorize Bruce and I to make a field observation visit to ensure that everything is consistent with the representations that they have made. And that we be further authorized to review the file and research what is necessary to properly close this out. Because Bruce and I can remember, we were out there with their engineer a while ago and I thought everything was, I thought we were down to minimal amounts. So I've got to go back through our records as well. But we just require board authorization and we'll be in touch with you folks.
Anybody have any questions?
So this will go to June?
No, we're just going to tell, right now, we're going to just, oh.
There are two bonds, ones for the.
Yes. We're aware of that, but we need to check our records because it seems to us that some of those bonds may have already been released. Portions of them. We'll be in touch.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion to grant our engineer and environmental consultant permission to look into all the records involved in this said property.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pardon the pronunciation, but is it Laspigna property? I don't know if I said that right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I make a recommendation? Andy Chung is here on behalf of the Moracho property, and I don't think there's anyone here that's seen him on Laspina and/or O'Kraft. So I suggest that I curiously take Mr. Chung in.
Nobody has any problem with moving up? Nope. Yes, we can move that up. So Moracho.
Good evening. Andy Chung, AC Engineering, here for the Morachos. 494 Lenningtonville Road, 10 and 1/2 acre property with a subdivision into two separate lots. Existing house remaining on the seven acre property and a new single-family dwelling on the three and 1/2 acre lot. Septic design has been completed. Been speaking with the Board of Health and with Anthony. Will need a subdivision approval before we can submit final plans to the Board of Health. DEC permits have been filed. The jurisdictional determination has been completed. DEP permits have been filed. There were some minor edits to the long EAF that I submitted to John and Bruce. Received Bruce's memo. He had a small comment regarding the plantings in the wetland mitigation area. So I'll respond to that. Basically, all the stormwater, everything, all of the engineering is being completed
Good evening again. So I do have a memo dated today. Bruce does have a memo. And again, they're pretty much dotted I's and crossed in T's. Mr. Chung has done most of the heavy lifting. What we would ask, Bruce and I, is that the planning board consider holding a public hearing on preliminary subdivision, wetland permit, and erosion control and steep slopes for the June meeting. That would allow us to move this forward. If you are willing to do that, it would take a simple oral resolution to set the public hearing for June. And it must specifically be for the three items.
Okay. Anybody have any comments?
No.
No.
I think the meeting will be June, I think 12th, right Vera? All right. Who'd like to make the motion to move this to the public hearing for the preliminary subdivision, wetland, steep slope, and erosion control for June 12th, 2025? Sorry?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is, we had talked about this last time, and when Bruce came back, he wanted to do the, change the order a little bit. So what Bruce and I are asking for is authorization to prepare the EAF Parts II and III with a negative declaration for your consideration, and also a resolution of approval with conditions for the June meeting. Because we're not expecting a lot of public outcry here either, but we'd like to be prepared so that we can move this ahead at the next meeting, providing there is no substantive public comment.
Everybody okay with that?
All right, so we'll see you next month. You just need to work with Vera for the public hearing matters.
Good evening, everybody. My name is William Besharat. I'm representing the owner. He's actually in Florida. We are enjoying better weather than they do down there. This is, we haven't had a work session with the planning board on it, so I really don't have much comment. It's an existing building lot that got a Board of Health approval, and we would like to develop it with a single-family dwelling on it. And I don't know if there's any comments from Bruce and Tom, willing to take a look at them and see what we can do with them.
This is actually a first submittal. And the application was slightly unclear to us. Says site plan, but it appears as though what they may need is a steep slope and erosion control permit. It's not very clear on the plan set. Since it is just the first, you know, the first submittal, what we'd like, Bruce and I, would be authorization to conduct a field observation visit and then move to our comments. This is one of those lots where we both need to see it because it's kind of been around for quite a while and we need to see what the conditions are out there. And then we would have comments for the next meeting.
Okay. Everybody okay with that?
Take your time and review it, so.
Sorry?
I said, you can take your time and review it. It's a little confusing.
Yeah, I was looking at a couple of things there.
I understand that, and if we were, you know, unfortunately, the meeting did not take place for us to discuss it with the board. I would like to be also at the next work session if possible.
Well, yeah, if you discuss it tonight, because what we're planning, I know we're trying to put our, yeah, put our comments together for the next meeting.
That would be perfect.
The more we know about what you're proposing, the better off we will be.
You can explain it to us.
Yeah, but it's an existing building lot that barely has any trees on it right now. It's, the existing house is over here, is owned also by the Laspinas. And this is the lot that they owned for years, and now they finally want to develop it. So it's going to be accessed from the existing driveway for the existing house. And it's going to go, the house is going to be right here. Very little, I don't see any disturbance to any steep slopes, what have you, but I think the idea to go walk the side is a very great idea. This way, you can see it physically and see what the conditions of the lot itself. The septic system is in the rear area, has been approved by the Putnam County Health Department. And the area is fairly rocky. There's a lot of rock popping and what have you. So when they see it, they'll have a better idea and better comment.
I do have a question just off the bat.
Sure.
You're saying this property is going to be accessed off the existing driveway, which takes to the house, which actually goes through that particular lot?
Correct.
So obviously, you're going to have to have some kind of easement or?
Correct, yes. Yeah, easements will be written. I think they are in order. I have to check with John, John Laspina, on what the situation with the easement on it. Because like I said, he owned both lots, and I think there is one, but I'll double-check on that.
You would have to, even if it's owned by the same, you know, people for future, if you want to sell it, you need to have some kind of.
I completely understand that. And like I said, it may be in place. I'm not sure yet.
Okay. It's just an issue. I was just kind of looking.
Yeah. All right. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
You're going to have to ask Bruce here. I need to speed on here to develop a list of disturbance because if he's disturbing greater than 5,000 worth feet, which I think he is.
Yes, we got, I think we have it here. The disturbance is 18,480.
Okay. They didn't spend a lot of time looking at it.
Okay. That's what, I wish we were under 5,000. We would not be here. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening, Vera.
Cuba properties?
I don't know what you want to do, Chairman. Autocraft, I think, I think you know the story.
Yes.
So here again, all Bill and I, all Bruce and I were looking for was your authorization for us to go out there and do a field visit with Mr. Walters to get a sense of what's going on. Because we think it's more than just autocraft, but there's a lot of moving pieces on autocraft as well. So we need to get out there and pick them up.
Okay. Everybody okay with them making the site present? Yes.
Okay. And now before we move below the line, Sarah from the Attorney's Office did arrive.
Hi.
And I'll let her introduce herself because I have.
You can.
Yes, I'm Sarah.
No, you can come up to the podium and just.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ryan. I'm with Van de Water and Van de Water. I'm going to be filling in as the attorney to the board. So I just wanted to introduce myself, and I'll have cards to give out, but brushing up on the open matters before the board currently.
Thank you very much for coming.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Wish you luck. Okay. Now, we are below the line. I was going to say, who wants to do below the line, but I'm afraid, John, that's you.
Yeah, Sarah's going to give it.
Yeah, okay. Yeah.
Just let her jump away.
Homeland Towers, the ball is in their court for the meeting, if you will. I'm not going to go there. So we're waiting for information from them. The only thing I will tell you is that once they resubmit, and if the application is deemed complete, there is a definitive timeframe and shot clock that gets triggered. So if an application is made, it has to be properly processed and distributed so that you and your consultants have adequate time to conduct the proper reviews and get you what you need in order to work with this application. Because the feds don't give us much time.
And it's like 60 days, right?
90 days.
90 days.
It varies. Got to see what they call this because they play word games. But yes, the initial phase is 90 days for complete application. Azana, you moved that to administrative track. I owe the gentleman a response to an email. I've been swamped, so I haven't got to him. So that basically is, he just has to satisfy my comments and I can close that one out. Guy Lazaka Mayet, Mr. Walters asked me tonight what the status on that is. I have to reach out to Paul Lynch, and I think Paul is thinking he's done, but there's a couple minor tweaks that were needed, so I need to determine that. The same thing is with Rapoli. I think he may think he's done, but I think there was a couple tweaks that Bruce and I had that he needs to resolve. So I will contact Mr. Lynch and give him a friendly reminder. Morrow Equipment, to the best of my knowledge and belief, is off pursuing their necessary other approvals, DOT, DEC, DEP. We haven't had an update. Alper Property, I think that's moved on. Not sure where that one sits. White Vernon is under construction. That can actually be taken off.
Yeah, the house is up.
Yep, okay. Murtaugh, that one's kind of, that's a bond return, but there's, I'm not going to push that one. We don't have any real written request. Cohen and Ryder are the same. Cohen is a subdivision handled by Joel Greenberg. Ryder, we all know and love, is handled by Mr. Greenberg as well. He keeps promising submittals, but I'll defer to Vera. The last I heard, he's hoping to get in for June.
Yeah.
Okay. Lakeside Bible, they have hired an engineer, and we should be seeing something from them in the near future. We did get notice. The monastery, that's on them. Holly is moving along, but they still are waiting some of their outside approvals. Route 52 Development, we're waiting on them. Metric Motors is a court matter. Nichols Road Project, we're waiting on them. Torres, we're waiting on them. And TJ Contracting, I think that's the one, Vera, that you indicated that an engineer has been in, and we should be seeing something in the near future from that gentleman. And that's an erosion and sediment control permit. And I think that does it, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that's good.
Questions?
Bill Walters, Building Inspector, Town of Kent. Question I have for the board, and possibly legal, is about the Homeland Tower project going on on Horton Town Road. About a notification to the neighbors. We provided the planning board with a list of neighbors out to 500 feet per our system. And according to the neighbors, a lot of, few of the neighbors were not notified. Our system takes it from the 500 foot, from the center line of the acreage. It doesn't go to the edge of the property and then out 500 feet. So I mean, if there were possibly neighbors that were not notified, I don't know how.
You understand what I'm trying to say?
I understand.
If you take, if it's 11 acres, it takes from that 11 acre, from the center of that acreage out.
Correct. If you couldn't step up there, so you can go up as well at the same time.
This has come up a couple different times. I mean, we try to help Vera out, but if this is going to become a legal issue, I can't change our system. So I mean, somebody's going to have to start doing some digging to find out. I'm not doing Google Maps and sort of clocking it up.
So I will admit, I need to refresh what your code does say about the notice requirements. If it does say within 500 feet of the property, I would assume that that would be from the property lines themselves. So if there was neighbors who failed to get notice, specific notice due to the way the systems run, then likely they would be owed notice. I would have to check into that to confirm. But a lot of it's going to depend on what your code requires. And if your code defines where the property begins and ends, if you say it's from the center in the code rather than the system, then it would be measured from the center. If it says just from the property, I would presume that that would mean the property lines.
I know in this particular case, we went out, on our database, we went out over 1,000 feet to get four or five neighbors. And that's what we generally do. We try to get, go as far as to at least get four that generally touch the property. But I guess in this case, we were short.
I would say that Putnam County Parcel Access would help identify additional properties because you can just measure them from those property lines as depicted.
What I'm getting at is that if this is going to be an ongoing thing, that we have to go from each property line out 500 feet, the building department's not going to do that. I'm not changing our database. It'll be up to the planning board to do that measurement through Google Maps or e-parcels or whatever. I don't have the time to sit down and start figuring out where each 500 mark is.
Okay. Two things I just wanted to say.
Yes.
Thank you for jumping in, but we told you, you'd be thrown into the defense.
I was expecting it at the time.
So I guess what I, my suggestion would be to Sarah to please complete your research and generate a small memo for the planning board.
Sir.
And if we do have to alter our means and methods, we'll have to sit down and figure out how to do that. Because usually, it's pretty clear from parcel access, it's really, you just identify the property and you snap a 500-foot radius. And I'm not sure how it works down here, but I know in Duchess County, that will actually print out the names and addresses. And if there's any issue as to whether or not it falls within that, they err on the side of caution. So they will kind of give you one that's 501, so to speak. And I'm not sure.
I will agree. You want to err on the side of more notice.
Right.
So we'll get Sarah's written opinion and then we'll figure out how to go from there.
Okay, sounds good.
I don't need to make a call.
Question on the board, you might as well, just right here. Just a question.
Just so, well, she just came on board, so she's not.
No, 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 yeah. I'm going to throw it out there. Exactly. No, it was just a question from the last time about the notification for the balloon test. It was moved to a weekday. I think that was fine. However, there was a question about whether there had to be a re-notification to the residents. And I think there was commotion in the meeting, and then it kind of got broken up, and so there was no definitive answer there. The balloon test was, a balloon test was then conducted. So a question that we have as residents is, is that balloon test count still valid? Or is it not because there was not notification there? I'm not looking for an answer today. I just wanted to bring that issue back up. That's all.
So I'll certainly look into that. I did briefly look into communications that Joe had before he left our office. And the conclusion that he seemed to have come to was that because the change in date, the move from a weekend to a weekday occurred at a public meeting that was duly noticed, that likely the re-noticing of that would not be affected. But if they failed to notify property owners who should have been notified in the first place, that may be an issue.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Sue, do you have anything? Okay. I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.